Everybody's quiet, so I guess we'll call this meeting to order. The mayor is listening online. He is on vacation or out of the country. I don't know. Both. And asked me to chair this evening. So if we would all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need roll call?
Yes, sir. Alderman Franklin?
Present.
Alderman Turner?
Present.
Alderman Chaney?
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Present.
Alderman Fauch?
Present.
Alderman Milner is not yet here. Mayor Zaring?
Present.
Alderman Mills?
Present.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Ceremonial matters. You have a proclamation in your packet. The mayor has signed it, deeming Saturday Small Business Saturday, Saturday the... I lost it. This Sa... Is it this Saturday? No, November 25th. There's no one here to accept it. So if it's okay with you, it's in your packet, you can read it. And the proclamation has been signed by the mayor. We have any public participation?
No, sir.
We'll move on with the minutes. We've got the board minutes of the regular meeting of November 6th. If there's no additions or corrections, entertain a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Alderman Dorhoff and seconded by Franklin. Correct? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes stand approved. Then we have the minutes of the work session of November 6th. Again, no additions or corrections. Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Turner and Mr. Fauch. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes stand approved. Okay. Tonight's agenda items appear to me to all be first reads, in case we're looking at that. First is a opening of public hearing for the rezoning of VP District to R1 District at 2701 East Elm Street. Christina.
Good evening. Christina Stanton, Community Development Director. And you guys have seen this rezoning application before you before, so I'm going to kind of jump into the history and what's changed, and kind of where we've been more recently. This rezoning for the four acres was before planning zoning back on June 15th. At that time, it had two conditions of approval, one pertaining to the need to obtain a variance for the number of detached accessory structures, and the application was recommended for approval eight to zero. On June 20th, the Board of Aldermen heard that request and read the ordinance for the first time only, and scheduled a second hearing for July 17th, with the understanding that the applicant was going to be heard for requested variance at the next Board of Zoning Adjustments meeting, which was on July 11th. The Board of Zoning Adjustment discussed the requested variance, and they also discussed the need for the code to be updated, to recommend larger, or to accommodate, sorry, larger residential lots, to be able to have more accessory structure, or at least an additional. A motion was made for approval and second, but with a vote of three to one, it failed, and the variance was denied. On two days later, July 13th, the applicant submitted a formal request for the rezoning application to be placed on hold due to the denial of the requested variance. As a result, the application's associated ordinance was pulled from the July 17th board meeting, and no final action was taken on that application. We spent some time doing some research and brought forward some code amendments. So fast forward to October 16th, the board approved various code amendments, one of which included amendment to section 405, 550a, 3a, formerly 405, 550d, 1, to allow for an additional accessory building on property zoned R1 of one and a half acre or larger in size, provided all setbacks and lot coverage requirements be met. The Planning and Zoning Commission reheard this item, having that change made to the code, that variance is no longer needed, and they voted five to zero to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen. So staff is recommending approval of the requested rezone from estate planned EP District to single-family R1 District, with the sole condition that the builder of Lot 2 shall install a sewer lateral line to serve the house on that lot, and said line shall connect to the existing sanitary sewer located between Lots 40 and 41 in East Elm Estates.
Is there anyone in the audience who has anything to... Comments on this? Okay, no? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does staff any questions for Christina? Or not staff, Alderman? No? Okay. We'll read the...
Council Bill 103 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville approving a rezoning of approximately four acres, four acres of land from estate planned EP District to single-family residential R1 District on land located at 2701 East Elm Street in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri. First year of Council Bill 103.
All right. Thank you. I think that's all the action we have on that this evening. That'll be taken back up again on our next meeting, December 4th. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on a special use permit for crematorium and mortuary at 1505 Brookheart Road.
Board, you have heard this one, but not with this application, and that's been back in 2018. They were before you back then for the same reason they are now, change of ownership. So Stonegate IFPLLC is seeking approval of the requested special use permit for continued use of the existing Stonegate Crematorium and Mortuary located at 1505 Brookheart Road. As I mentioned, they... They're before us because of the change of ownership. Should have actually occurred before the ownership change, but we're working where we're at. The property is zoned light industrial M1 District, and uses are both allowed with an approved special use permit, and they're existing. Additionally, I wanted to point out that the Conference of Plans supports this type of use, and that it is within the employment-heavy place type, which is intended to accommodate uses that are compatible with other place types in a community... Sorry. Not compatible, sorry, with others, and must be intentionally separated. I knew I left off word there. Very important one, too. So the Planning and Zoning Commission met on Thursday and heard this item and voted five to zero to recommend approval to this board. The recommendations, the conditions in here are the same as what they were previously. They're spelled out a little bit more clearly than previous staff reports from years past. But we're recommending approval of the special use permit for uses of crematorium and mortuary on property located at 1505 Brookheart Road, subject to the following seven conditions: The crematory-mortuary business is conditioned to Stonegate IFL LLC. If the applicants wish to transfer ownership to another party, the applicants must apply for a new special use permit to the city prior to the transfer of ownership release, other than owner name that's substantially the same language as what it was previously. Two, the crematory... Sorry, cremation units shall be within a fully enclosed permanent structure. Three, facilities shall be operated so as to not produce hazardous, objectionable, or offensive conditions by reason of odor, dust, lint, smoke, cinders, fumes, noise, vibration, heat, solid or liquid waste, fire or explosion. Four, the applicant shall comply with all applicable state regulations as required by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. Five, the applicant shall comply with all applicable federal regulations as required by the Environmental Protection Agency. Six, the applicant shall obtain and maintain an active business license, that one I added in just to make sure we're covered. And seven, the special use permit shall be valid for a time period of 12 years, at which time the applicants may reapply. The last two or three times it was renewed as 12 years, I think they had seven on the very first one, and had changed it at one point.
So this is doing the same business we've been doing for several years, in reality?
Just different ownership.
Right. Okay. And this is a public participation. Are there any questions from the audience? No? Any questions from the board?
Christine, is that the sole use of this?
Crematorium and mortuary. They did add the mortuary, add a couple of amendments back. I'd have to go back to my history to what year that was. I think it was before the last update.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will read the ordinance.
Council Bill 104 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville approving a special use permit for the uses of a crematorium and mortuary facilities on property located at 1505 South Brookheart Road in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri. First year of Council Bill 104.
Okay. And again, we'll have the second reading on the 5th.
Fourth of December.
What?
Fourth of December.
Fourth of December. See there? Okay. Next, we will open a public hearing for various code amendments.
Moving right along, right?
That's right.
So this one, you guys heard on the work session back in first part of November. The various amendments are providing clarity, cleanup inconsistencies, as well as missed corrections, as staff does miss things sometimes, and meeting various recommendations from the city's 2040 Conference of Plan. It can kind of be broken into 10 different areas, the first one being definitions that stem from comparing uses in the land use table with those currently defined, and making sure that our code also allows for the expanded types of housing as recommended by the 2040 Conference of Plan. So the definitions being proposed to add are bed and breakfast, cottage housing, dwelling loft, dwelling patio home, dwelling townhome, dwelling zero lot line, event venue, home composting, mushroom barn, and caves, and that one's been a use that's been in the code probably since the beginning of this code, and short-term rental. Another correction we have are correcting limited to light industrial in sections 405, 60, and 65, to be consistent with other references within the code. Correcting lot coverage requirements for the R3 and R4 districts, sections 405, 185a5 and 405, 205a6, and the dimensional standards table. Staff kind of got probably a little too happy with copy paste, and I think that's how I missed this one, so I'll own up to that. It's lining up with the APWA runoff coefficients that we talked about previously. Changes with Chapter 220, nuisances to include definitions and plant listings for noxious and invasive plants. These changes stem from the recommendations from Mark's 2040 Model Ordinance for Tree Protection, Lead Management, and Native Plant Encouragement. In case anybody doesn't know, Mark is Mid-America Regional Council. This, again, was part of the recommendation from our 2040 Conference of Plan. Removal of sections 410, 240, and 250, this... These sections were intended to be removed when I did amendments to the subdivision regulations for cleanup and clarity there, but staff inadvertently missed it when I was writing the ordinance. Changes to various code sections pertaining to the number of sets of plans and size of plans required for smittal. Some of these were parts I should have caught when I did code amendments for development process a few months back. Others were ones that weren't seen before and were missed, so I just kind of caught them all at the same time, making sure they're as consistent as possible, without making too drastic of a change in some of the verbiage of one of the existing ones. Also adding a special use permit criteria for bed and breakfast, intermodal containers for seasonal cells, and massage establishments and residential. Changes to section 405, 550a2d, intermodal containers. This comes after a lot of discussion and variances, and a lot of consideration by staff, and looking with other property owners, trying to build back some flexibility into the code, and clarify various tiers of usage that make more sense. And also, that's kind of why we added the special use for the bigger uses Walmart or Sutherland's could be able to use for seasonal cells. Also adding home composting to listed additional accessory uses. That is clear, trying to make it more evident that that is an allowed accessory use. I think that was something that came out of our 2040 Conference of Plan. It was not clear to the consultants who was providing the plan for us that that was something that was an allowed accessory use, because we have it listed as prohibited, but that's really intended for the commercial, not the residential. And correcting a couple of references that were missed during previous code amendments pertaining to pawn shops and small loan establishments. So this went before the Planning and Zoning Commission last Thursday, and they voted six to zero to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen. So staff is recommending approval of the proposed code changes.
All right. Thank you. That's... Yeah. We had a work session on that. There's a lot of stuff in there. But so you've had lots of opportunities, but again, it's a public hearing. If anyone in the audience has any questions pertaining to this board, questions for Christina? Like I say, we've been through it a few times, but you find new stuff all the time. No? Okay. If not, we'll move forward. The ordinance.
Council Bill 105 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, amending Articles 1, 3, 9, 10, 12, 11, and 20 under Chapter 405, zoning regulations, Articles 4 and 6 under Chapter 410, subdivision regulations, Article 4 under Chapter 220, nuisances, Chapter 630, pawn brokers and small loan establishments, Appendix A to Chapter 405, land use table, and Appendix B to Chapter 405, dimensional standards for the Harrisville Municipal Code, and establishing an effective date. First year of Council Bill 105.
All right. And again, we'll have that second reading on the December 5th.
4th.
Oh, 4th. Okay.
That fits my work.
Next is Council Bill 106. Jeremy.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. For you tonight is the budget for 2024 process, which we began back in August. Each department input their budget based on the prior year, and prior years of budgets. I would like to thank everybody for their hard work, and specifically call out Kim, Sandora, and Ben Hart. Without them, this probably never comes together. They do much of the heavy lift. The total budget for 2024 is $45,450,085. The budget focus this year relies heavily on the work done in prior years by the board to invest in our personnel through, you know, the pay study, funding benefits, and giving them training opportunities. We believe those investments continue to pay dividends to retention and hiring opportunities. However, those investments do impact the budget, as personnel is the largest reoccurring expense for the city. Along with inflationary factors and a cautious approach to growth over the next year, the budget is leaner in new purchases, new programming, and new projects, but we present a budget to you that we're confident provides for the equipment that all those departments need to serve the citizens. That's not to mean that we're resting on our laurels. From a capital project standpoint, there are many projects that have already been approved, and they're partially funded by either federal or state grants with city match, and they're in various stages of planning or construction, and those will be realized in '24. Some of those are the airport runway project, South Sanitary Sewer, the Bridge Over Muddy Creek, South Commercial Street Extension, the Royal Street Extension, the Lake Harrisonville spillway, which maybe you'll finish sometime soon, the fire station remodel, which is currently started. If you haven't seen the mess that that is, I encourage you to review those pictures in the weekly report. And then multiple stormwater projects. Revenues such as taxes, and revenues are a conglomeration of tax revenue, and the budget includes rate changes to water, sewer, electric, and trash, based on the prior accepted board rate studies. And then the refuse contract with our current provider has an escalator that kicks in in 2024, and that has to be reflected in the rates moving forward into 2024. The capital projects that are ongoing, that started in 2023, will work up till the end of the year, and then there'll be a budget amendment that we bring back in the new year to adjust for how far they... How much money they spent, and then so we can roll those projects over. We present this as the board's budget, and recommend approval as it stands. The final budget book will be submitted to the GFOA Association for Budget Reward, Award Regarding Transparency, which we have received in the past. I entertain any questions? Go ahead.
I just had a couple. As I was going through this today, and just out of curiosity, I noticed under fleet... We're still with lease, correct? We're still on the leasing enterprise?
Yeah, to us, for the most part.
I know we had talked about it.
We're looking at our options when it comes to some of the problems that we've had with the lease purchase.
The K-9 vehicle? So we didn't have one?
Yeah.
Or is it... We just needed a new one?
We need to replace it. It's aging out. It has... It's got high miles.
And was it on our lease? I didn't think it was.
It wasn't in the past. It was an owned product.
Okay.
And so we... Because one of the balancing facts of what we decide to lease versus purchase sometimes is how much upfit. So what upfit is, is the equipment that we have to put into one of these pieces of equipment. And so a K-9 vehicle has a tremendous dollar amount of upfit, so you wouldn't want to roll that vehicle very frequently, because then you're going to have to rebuy all of that equipment again.
Yeah.
And we want to get as much out of that equipment as we possibly can. So that's why the choice is to purchase that vehicle.
Yeah. Okay, good. The other one was... The other vehicle was the city administrator vehicle. So we are... Why are we getting another?
So...
I assumed Carl's would go to...
So currently is scheduled to... Carl is going to maintain the current city vehicle, because he manages the projects that he's in charge of as a project engineer, and I believe the... A new vehicle was needed to provide for Patty's employment, to do the things that she does for us, travel to all the meetings, and, you know, participate in more meetings.
Right. No, absolutely. Yeah.
So the choice was, do we enter into another lease, or do we purchase a vehicle? One of the challenges that comes of the lease program is they put mileage limitations on these, or you have to buy mileage.
Yes.
And administrator Ratliff drives a lot more than almost everyone. And so as such, we run into problems with that. And so the last time we traded out vehicles, we took a hit on that vehicle when we looked at selling. And so at this point, it made sense to potentially just buy that vehicle, let it accumulate more miles, take it out of the program, and look at it from that perspective.
And keep it longer.
Yeah. Instead of replacing it. We wouldn't be replacing it yearly.
Well, I just didn't know, because I knew... Pardon me, I'm so sorry. I just knew Roger didn't have a vehicle, so I just assumed Carl's vehicle would go that way.
Roger's planning.
The engineer? Because isn't that... I just thought when we moved positions, that vehicles would move.
Roger was planning and zoning. He's in... Christina's in his spot.
The engineer? Not Carl, I'm sorry, Roger.
Well, Roger was the planner.
Oh, that's right. Okay. My bad. See? I thought Roger was engineer.
No.
Okay.
He's planner.
Got it. Okay. Pay no attention to that last question then.
It's fine. I'm happy to explain our methodology. It's... Vehicles are a very challenging thing. You know, the lease works for us in some cases, and in other cases, it's... It just doesn't seem to work out.
No.
We're a little frustrated with the financing through Enterprise, and one of the things that we're going to look to do, and I think I discussed this at one of our work sessions, is that we're going to look at other avenues for financing than direct through them. We'll look at our local banks, and we'll look at some other financing mechanisms for those, because it's just... It's not as transparent as we'd like it through Enterprise.
The only other one I had was, and this was kind of exciting, was the tennis courts resurfacing? Is that a true statement?
So that's... I think that that's an under unfunded.
It's under unfunded.
Under unfunded?
There's a lot of unfunded.
I was going to say, because there was... A lot of people will be excited about that, if that's the case.
I'm going with the unfunded number to see Dr. Chastain.
Okay.
We're calling for grants for us.
There you go.
Buy some more grants.
There... Yeah. I mean, we're trying to... Those are a lot of things we're trying to get grants on, on the unfunded list as well. And I was going to tell you on the vehicle day, you know, the first thing they told me, they didn't know if we... They wanted me in to help with the cash flow deal, and now Sandora told me, get out.
Yeah.
And I... So I'm sometimes wanted, and then they kicked me out.
Well, there's a lot of data there, and we've had a lot of time on it, but any other questions?
I was just going to ask about on the... On the debt service, we're at 20% of statutory, right? Is that all debt? All city debt?
20% on...
So are you saying what we would allow the city to accumulate?
We're at 20% of what we're allowed by law, right?
Well, it's based upon assessed value, so based on what the city's assessed values, yes.
But that's... That's all city debt, right? Including water and sewer and community center? No?
No. I don't know any statute on that, but you're still...
Okay.
And I don't know if you're also talking about the... On the fines and fees, there's a 20% limit that a city can take in on fines and fees based upon the overall budget. There's a 20% on that.
Well, I'm just looking at the paragraph that says the city has a 35.4... I assume that's $1 million debt margin.
Right.
With total outstanding bonds at 20% of the statutory cap.
Right. That's based on assessed value.
Okay. Okay. All right. Are we good? We'll move with the first reading of Council Bill 106?
Council Bill 106 is an ordinance of the Harrisville Board of Aldermen adopting an operating budget for the City of Harrisville, Missouri, for the fiscal year January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024. First year of Council Bill 106.
Again, we'll have a second then, on December 4. Got it right. Okay. We're up to Alderman and committee reports, so I don't know. On my right here, Mr. Chaney, you got anything?
Nope. I just want to tell everybody thank you. That serves our city, and I hope you guys have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Alderman Franklin?
Yes, I wanted to wish everybody a great Thanksgiving with your friends and your family. Be safe in your travels. And don't forget, on December 3rd, we're going to be doing Christmas on the Square for Love the Harrisonville Square with the lighting of the Mayor's Christmas tree. We've got the Chamber will be doing a chili supper. The different businesses will be open and doing things for the kiddos, so be sure that you get to that. It's from 3 to 7, I believe, on Saturday, December 2nd.
Okay. Alderman Turner?
Nothing.
All right.
Coach Chiefs.
Okay.
I'll second that one, and yeah, everybody have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Alderman Miller?
Same here. I haven't got anything, but enjoy your holiday.
All right. City Administrator?
Thanksgiving week, so city offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday. As Alderman Franklin said, at Christmas on the Square and the Mayor's Christmas tree lighting will be at 6 o'clock on December 2nd. And then Mark Connect, Connect to KC is 2050. They had a public meeting at the library for the public, and 10 people from the public came for input. Firehouse remodel continues to move along quickly. Community center indoor pool project. After these couple of years with outdoor and indoor pools, Grant and I will never ask or adding pools anywhere. There always seemed something going on with the pools. Oakville Emergency Sanitary Service Repair is getting prepared. Approved a lettered contract, go to the contractor. South Service Areas Project, they're just north of the Walmart Distribution Center Drive entrance. I actually got an email from the manager of Walmart Distribution last week asking me what was going on with all the equipment that was out there, and so I reminded him what was going on. He goes, oh, okay, yeah, I remember that. Royal Street Extension Project, engineers will be here tonight to let you all know where we're at in the process, and then they'll also be having a meeting with the TDD Board to brief them as well on the project as well. The FEMA buyout for Muddy Creek Project, the work is under... The work that we're working under contract... under contract about removal, also is about to appraisals and send them out to the property owners to get information back from them as well. So we're hoping that this process, Ted said it kind of, the state kind of sped up a little bit, so now we can speed up with them to get that process going. Hopefully, by next spring, we'll have some things completed with that. And then Officer Sarah Floyd has completed her field training. It's very least to be on her own, so congratulations to her. Fire Department keeps having fires. Animal control is, the shelter is still full. And there has been some talks about what we can do to modify some of those problems, even foster programs and those kind of items to try to help with that. Alderman Mills told me what they used to do back in the old days every quarter in discussion, so I'll bring that up to staff on that. But then the old electric and power plant facility continues to come down. They're hoping by the end of this month to be done with the major part of the demolition part. There'll probably be some additional backfilling and everything that needs to be done as well. As Jeremy was speaking earlier about the different ones, I'll compliment him, all the hard work he did with the budget, also all the department heads. For me, you know, usually if there's something that they're not getting from the department heads, they bring it to me, and then I come down on their heads. And so I appreciate department heads working with us to get that accomplished as well. And want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you. We have no media this evening, so good wishes for Thanksgiving from me also. And we'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? I second.
Okay. Ms. Alderman Millner's first, and Ms. Franklin's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned. We'll be back in about 10 minutes with our work session. Park board's here. There's some snacks up front. Help yourself. Our engineer also, go for some food.